Five P M. To enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, votes may be taken. Also pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation to conduct collective bargaining sessions for the Water and Sewer Union Contract and the Highway Union Contract, votes may be taken.
Okay, we'll take a, we'll take a vote, roll call vote to go into executive session. You have a motion?
Yep, I made the motion, he seconded.
Second. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Four yes, one absent. We're in executive session. Thank you for being patient, we're in an executive session. We're going to, excuse me?
Let me pull it up.
We're going to, we have a public hearing, a tax classification, public hearing starting at seven thirty. Public hearing at seven thirty, fiscal year 2022, tax classification hearing. The Board of Select will hold a classification hearing at seven thirty on Monday, November twenty-second. The Board of Select, upon hearing data relevant to the fiscal efforts of the available alternative and upon recommendations made by the assessors, will decide whether the town will continue with one tax rate for all classes of property or adopt multiple tax rates. Public is voting. Attend and give comment. That's not working?
Nope, it's not working. I don't know why. It was working this time.
It broke it. And we have a, we have a letter from the Board of Assessors. Residents of the town, please note that the Board of Select will hold a public hearing Monday, November twenty-second, 2021, to discuss the annual classification of real estate taxes prior to issuance of tax bills. Historically, the town has always and only had a single tax rate. The recommendation from the Board of Assessors is to continue to adopt a residential factor of one. This is due to the fact that ninety-three point four percent of the community is made up of residential properties and only six point six are commercial or industrial. It would be unfair to shift the tax burden onto our local businesses when they only make up such a small percentage of the town. The tax recap is finalized as the tax rate can be set, is being finalized so the tax rate can be set, and bills will be prepared to be mailed out in a latter part of December. Any comments on the tax classification? Anybody to make a motion to go, to adopt the single tax rate recommended by the Board of Assessors?
I'll make a motion to set the tax classification residence of one, single tax rate by the, on the recommendation of the Assessors Board.
Okay.
Second.
And a second. I think we should have, at the beginning of the public hearing, we should have voted to, for the public hearings. We'll, so the motion in a second. Any further discussion on the single tax rate? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Four in favor, one absent. We'll revert the regular order of business. Public comment, we didn't have any approval of warrants. Jason, you want to handle payroll and the bill warrants? Do you have that?
I think we have to officially exit out of the public hearing.
Excuse me?
I think we have to officially exit out of the public hearing.
Okay. Well, I'll take a vote to.
Make a motion to end the public hearing?
There was a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Four in favor, one absent. Do the approval of the warrants?
Yes. Okay.
I make a motion to approve payroll warrant in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and seventy-one cents.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on the payroll warrant? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Bill Warren.
I'll make a motion to approve bill warrant twenty-two, twenty-one, in the amount of four hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-one cents, which breaks down to the town of one hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Water and sewer, sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Payroll withholding, thirty-two thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Light bills, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. And grants revolving, forty thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Approval of minutes, November eighth, 2021.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for November eighth, 2021.
Second.
A motion in a second. They look to be in order. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Appointments. Appointment of Jennifer Ursovich, twelve Hemlock Road, Boxford, to the position of Youth Services Librarian effective November twenty-ninth, 2021. This is a full-time position, thirty-seven hours a week, nineteen dollars and forty-eight cents an hour, subject to a successful query.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jennifer Ursovich of twelve Hemlock Road, Boxford, to the position of Youth Services Librarian effective November twenty-ninth, 2021, for thirty-seven hours a week at a rate of nineteen dollars and forty-eight cents, subject to a successful query.
Second.
A motion and a second. This is, came with a recommendation from the Director of the Library, and it looks like she's well-qualified. Any, go ahead.
Yeah, I just noticed in looking through her resume, or her letter, which is very well-written and interesting, that she has been working in, as a film technician with Ipswich Community Access Media. So, might be able to tap on her for some film stuff as well. Could be nice, right?
Um.
Be very advantageous for us.
Yes, as long as it can be worked into her thirty-seven hours a week.
We shall see.
Any other discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Moving on. Appointment of Nisha Burke, current program and transportation coordinator, as interim council on aging director. Comes with a recommendation from the Council on Aging and from the new town administrator, Rebecca Oldham.
I'll make a motion to appoint Nisha Burke as an interim council on aging director.
A motion and a second.
A second.
Um, any further discussion? None.
Yes.
Bill, go ahead.
Can somebody clue us in on why the one we had just hired left so suddenly? Is, is there, is there a problem that needs to be addressed that she left so quickly? Do we know why, what happened?
I think it was in everybody's best interest to pot ways on amicable terms.
There's a very short letter in our packet.
Yeah, I just wondered if there's more. Okay. All right.
I just.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to, for people that perhaps haven't had a chance to meet Nisha, she's been with us for quite a few years now, and she's just amazing. And again, she's stepping up for us, and I personally thank her very much for this. Thank you, Nisha.
Okay, any other? None. There was a motion. Kathy made the motion. Jason, you seconded?
I think I made the motion.
You made the motion, Kathy seconded.
Yeah.
No further discussion. All in favor?
Yes.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you. The votes of the board. A vote on the town administrator contract. Kathy, you want to give us an office on the contract?
Sure, I'd be glad to. So, tonight, we're pleased to announce that we have reached a contractual agreement with Rebecca Oldham to be the town's very first town administrator. It is a three-year contract, a starting salary of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, with a first-year increase of thirty-three hundred dollars based on favorable evaluation. It includes all the standard, have-to-go-to-night meetings, half the taking phone calls from us. But Ms. Oldham has stepped up even during the interim period here and has been assuming the duties of the town administrator and getting our town running more smoothly. You can already see the differences in just our meetings alone. So, we welcome her, and we look forward to working with her. We're very excited to have an excellent candidate take this job. Is there anything else in the contract that I might have overlooked? I think it's fairly standard, other than.
Is that something, Bill?
The term and the salary.
Pretty, pretty.
It seems straightforward to me.
It is. Okay, thank you.
I didn't welcome aboard, and to quote my cousin Vinny, I think you'll be very pleased with Rebecca.
Okay, well, we have to, we need to vote on the administrative contract. Anybody, how about a motion to, motion in a second, to vote on the administrative contract in public?
Okay. I'll make a motion to ratify and vote on the administrative contract as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Accept the resignation of Denise Gilman as the council on aging director. We have a letter of resignation from Denise, effective November twelfth.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Denise Gilman as, from the council on aging director, and wish her well in future endeavors.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Accept the resignation of Shawna Gray as Assistant Town Clerk. We have a letter, Shawna was working, Assistant Town Clerk, resigned effective November eighth, due to the holiday on November eleventh. She's resigned, except a better job.
Oh, she took a, okay.
Uh, motion? Motion to accept the resignation of Shawna Gray, Assistant Town Clerk?
A motion to accept the resignation of Shawna Gray as the Assistant Town Clerk with regret. I understand from the clerk, she was excellent, and wish her well in future endeavors.
I'll second that.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Accept the resignation of Holly Richardson as a senior highway laborer. Holly Richardson left November, effective two weeks from November eighth, and he got a better job. Do we need a motion? Somebody?
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Harley Richardson from the senior labor driver operated at the Highway Department, Town of Groveland, effective two weeks from November eighth, 2021, with regret, and wish him well in his future endeavors.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Moving on. Special event permit application for Harvard Street Productions LLC to utilize one fifty Center Street, AKA Strawberry Fields, for filming on December twelfth, from five A.M. to five P.M. Rebecca, you want to give a little explanation on this? I knew you would have been working on.
I'm tired to know.
From what I understand, it is, um. From what I understand, it is a movie production that they're looking to have over at one fifty Center Street, closer to the backside of the property, towards the highway garage. They're looking for a one-day permit. They do not, or they, the application has been reviewed by the fire chief, the police chief, the building commissioner, and the health department, and they have satisfied all the requirements, and they have signed off on such.
Okay. Any, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for Harvard Street Productions LLC for twelve, twelve, twenty-one, five A.M. to five P.M.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Bill?
I just noticed that December twelfth is a Sunday. How close are we going to be to the residents at five A.M. in the morning on a Sunday?
At Center Street?
Do we know?
Yeah.
It's the back portion near the gun range, so it wouldn't be right up against a residential neighborhood, from my understanding, and the aerial.
There's a map provided here of where they're going to be.
Yeah, but.
Doesn't really explain it, though.
Right. And I don't know how sound carries through that area. You know what I mean? I don't want to get calls at five fifteen in the morning asking me if amigating has happened, because I don't know what they're bringing, what kind of, you know, equipment, what kind of noise they're going to cause at five A.M. on a Sunday morning. That's, that's my biggest concern. I think it's great that somebody wants to do something here, but I worry about any residents that are impacted at five A.M. on a Sunday morning.
Generally, at that time, five o'clock in the morning, they'll be doing a setup, and they probably wouldn't do production until sunup.
My understanding is that it's very limited in terms of what they're looking for. They're not having any tents, any really major equipment, other than their, their film equipment. And I don't believe it's going to be very action-oriented, based upon the description that the gentleman had provided me. He did say that he was going to be here this evening. I don't know if he is participating via Zoom, but.
Nobody's on Zoom.
So, I'm not too sure if he could provide more information, or if we want to wait until he can provide more information. I know that it's kind of tight with schedules, but maybe a condition in terms of noise might be satisfactory.
Says no amplified sound, though.
No amplified sound.
Amplified sounds are different than rolling-in tractor trailers with equipment and lights and.
Nope, no required.
Production crews and.
No lights.
Gaffers and, I don't know what else.
Well, look at this, no lights.
Well, it indicates here a ten-by-ten pop-up tent and one table with two chairs.
Not much.
Just want to make sure.
It seems to be very limited in nature. We asked about bathrooms, we asked about all those things. They said that they own a house close by, so if anybody needed to use anything, they would be using that residence, so they weren't going to be bringing that much. But again, either maybe a condition in terms of the noise or notification, or we can possibly wait until our next meeting on December sixth, prior to, in a special town meeting.
I don't want to hold anything up. I just want to voice my concern that hopefully there's not a lot of racket at five o'clock on a Sunday morning, that's all.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Thank you. A vote to approve and sign the following liquor license renewals. Jason, if we do these all, all in one, are there any that should be excluded because paperwork isn't in?
Not for the liquor licenses. To my knowledge, all the liquor licenses are here and paid.
Here and paid. Do you want to make a motion to accept them all, list it and read them out? Or you want me to read them?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license renewals for Route ninety-seven Liquors, Groveland Market, Jerry's Variety, Nyrods, Nichols Village, Pub ninety-seven, Tea Garden, Cedar Dale Swim Club, and Groveland Fairways.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Thank you. Vote to approve and sign the Class Two license renewals. All these set?
No, I believe South Salem is not set, which is Price Right, and Auto Repair, et cetera, on nine twenty-three Salem is not set.
Okay, so, everything, you've got Greenwood Auto Body is in, Groveland Auto Repair and Sales, and Cornerstone Motors, eight eighty-three Salem Street.
Yes, so I'll make a motion to approve the Class Two Used Car License Renewals for Greenwood Auto Body, Groveland Auto Repair, and Cornerstone Motor Works.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent.
Now, are we sending a letter to the other ones that were just waiting for something from them? Paperwork?
Well, they're already, they, they received the renewal.
We sent them. I don't know if they've received them or not. I can, I can make sure we follow up with a letter.
We usually resent a deficiency letter that you're deficient in this or that, insurance certificates or something.
I know. So, it's just two auto repair shops that we're waiting on?
And these take effect January first.
Okay, so we have some time.
The auto licenses, I believe, was December thirty-first, for some reason.
Okay.
If I remember looking at the date on it.
They expire on December thirty-first? That makes sense.
Yes. And then the regular ones, yeah. So, yeah, January first.
January first. Okay, vote to approve and sign the following common vic license renewals.
Okay, on the common vics, we are still waiting for response from Your Place and Ours and Riverside Pizza.
Your Place and Ours?
And we followed up with both of them, but I'll follow up again.
Which one are they?
F and M Company, doing businesses, Your Place and Ours, what was the other?
Riverside Pizza.
But they're not listed here, right?
Here they are.
They are?
Yeah.
I'm looking for it.
Next to last, third page.
Oh, next to last. Oh, Your Place and Ours.
No, no, Riverside is four up, five up from the bottom with that list. Pizza Grove, go five up.
Okay, yeah.
Jason, you want to read those?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the common vic license renewals for Nichols Village, Pub ninety-seven, the Tea Garden, Cedar Dale Tennis and Swim Club, Groveland Fairways, Ultimate Perk Coffee, the Chesterton Cafe, Penticott Regional School District, V.C. Memorial Park, and Pizza Grove.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Thank you. Discussion and possible vote. Assistant Treasurer, Collective Position, a position, description, and job posting. We have applied with a. Job description, the job posting. Do we, do we want to get that job posted?
Oh, yes. Do we have enough money in that salary for this? My first question ever. Has that salary been expended for any other purposes?
Where are we posting it at?
It's at twenty-six to twenty-eight dollars an hour, but thirty hours a week. Do you, you calculating? Ah, here he goes.
Yeah.
I'll have another moment, Charlie.
How many hours?
Thirty hours per week.
It doesn't say that on here.
It does. In the job description in here.
That line item has about twenty-eight thousand dollars left in that account.
Oh, is that all? Okay. And what, what does it calculate out if we get some?
I'm sorry, Kathy, could you point that out? Because I don't see it on there.
Yeah, it's right here.
Page two.
Page two.
It should be on the job posting.
I know, but it isn't. It's on here, right in the top. Yeah.
All right. Well, I was looking for it on the job posting rather than the description.
We don't want them to know right away.
What's that?
We don't want them to know right away. We want to try to lure them in and get more.
With happy thoughts.
More applications.
So, do we, do we have enough money allocated to make it through the year or not, Bill? I thought you were crunching it.
Uh, let's see. Let me find the line item. Assistant, here we go. Uh, not really, we've only, uh.
We have twenty-eight thousand.
We've got twenty-eight-three left for the year.
Yeah.
We budgeted forty-three. I don't, I don't understand why we budgeted forty-three or forty-two. That doesn't make any sense to me at all. Nobody would put a number like that. But that's neither here nor there. If, if that's to be believed, we spent fourteen seven against that, leaves us twenty-eight-three.
So, we should have enough.
Good for about thirty-four weeks.
So, we did the math, and it turns out that if we did offer at the twenty-eight, starting January one, we would have sufficient funds, and we would have a little bit of an overlap if we stuck within the parameters as specified. And that is, again, starting on January one.
Excellent.
But it would be a little leftover, so there wouldn't be much room for negotiation if otherwise necessary.
Yeah. And I noticed that Gloucester is advertising for the same thing at fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, just a little bit higher.
And, well, they've got a city. They're going, they're going to afford to pay more, you know what I mean?
And it's probably forty hours.
Someone else is, is advertising. I saw something out there. It's close by, too. It's another surrounding town that's going to compete with us.
We'll see what it gets us. I'm all, I'm all for posting this. Make a motion to post this.
Somebody want to make a motion to post this position at?
I'll second that motion.
A motion, motion in a second. Any further discussion? A motion, motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Job posting? All in favor, one absent. Thank you. Administrative Coordinator position. This is a, this would be, again, a budgeted position for Administrative Coordinator for the, for the Board of Selectmen. We do have a job description. I don't have it here with me. And a pay, I think it was nine, I think it was $19 an hour. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're not. I believe that is...
$19 an hour at, how many hours a week? 24 or 25?
I believe we booked it to 25.
25?
At the town meeting.
I agree, yeah, it was 25.
But I think we should probably get some advice from our new town administrator.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Rebecca, do you have some comments on that?
It depends on what type of advice you're looking for. So are we talking about what the role will become with the new town administrator role, and whether or not that will be a shared position with the Board of Selectmen, or whether or not they're interested in pursuing what that setup would look like? And for me to provide you some examples of such, what type of advice can I offer?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to go ahead and table this until Rebecca has an opportunity to put that information together, and...
There's a motion to table.
Next meeting.
There are second and a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of tabling? Four in favor, one absent.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. And so the administrative, the Assistant Treasurer position, are we going to discuss the Treasurer Consultants as part of that, or?
I would like to. Can we do that? As unanticipated?
Sure, why not?
Call it unanticipated, but move it up here while we're still on the posting thing, if that's okay?
Sure, why not?
Good. So, as you recall, when we began the fiscal year, we still didn't have a Treasurer or an assistant, well, we had an Assistant Treasurer, we didn't have a Treasurer, so we revised the agreement with Sarah Hunter Munee, oh, I'm forgetting the name of the Munee. I always forget the name. Munifin, is that it? Something, I'm so sorry if I'm butchering it. But, um, so I've done a great work here, but we revised it to fit within the budget of the Treasurer position. We have now filled the Treasurer position, so you can no longer bill the Consultant to that position. And now we're posting the Assistant Treasurer position. So we would not have a place to bill this $1,500 a week, too. And I would also wonder, I don't feel that we would need all that anymore. And I'm open to suggestions from the town administrator on how else we can proceed moving forward to stay within our budget.
This is on the Assistant Treasurer Collector position?
This is on the Consultant Treasurer position, which now we don't have a funding source for. Because we were billing this to the Treasurer. We filled that position. Now we're posting the Assistant Treasurer. I don't want to see that amount become depleted. So, I mean, as you know, Sarah provided us with incredible effort that weekend, and closed out and caught up the prior fiscal year, so that is done. And that was the major reason for bringing her in and giving her the additional hours into this year, was to catch up the prior year Treasury work, which is now accomplished.
So do we continue to require her services? Is that what the question is?
That is the question. Do, do you want to pay $130 an hour for consultant services, or do we want to look at other less expensive options? We do have, you know, a new person coming into Treasury, and we have a Treasurer who's, has a year, year and a half under her belt. I think there are less expensive resources we can, they can access for questions than $130 an hour, which, I mean, that's what you pay for a fully qualified, fully certified consultant like Sarah Hunter. She's top quality, but also top price.
Why would we keep her on if we, if we hire an Assistant Treasurer Collector?
Exactly. So, but we, we voted the letter as of July 1st, so we would need to vote to give her 14 days to terminate services with her company. And I, I think it's a friendly partying. She's done a great job. We, we've gotten exactly what we asked for. We asked her to close out the prior fiscal year. It's done.
Wouldn't it be advantageous to keep her on until we further into an Assistant Treasurer Collector position? If we're ready to bring somebody on board for that position?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I could, I think they have a little arrangement. I saw on the variance, they still have money left in the clerical line that we created for the water and sewer clerk that was coming over and helping with collections when things got a little hectic. I think that that could be, continue. But I'm reluctant to bill, somebody as highly qualified as Sarah is certainly not going to do Assistant Treasurer work, nor should we pay her 100, at her rate, to do Assistant Treasurer work. So I'm open to, to other suggestions or options. I, I feel like we have that reciprocal agreement with the clerk from Water and Sewer, and perhaps there's other ideas out there. Less expensive.
Jason?
Well, I know we originally wanted to keep her on to help give Michelle a little bit more guidance, as well as be Michelle's safety net. So now that I'm a little bit more educated, there are free things that Michelle can use for guidance and as a safety net. So I, I do think that although Sarah has been phenomenal on a lot of different aspects, I, I think we've outgrown her, the need for her assistance at this time.
And what, what, we have to give her 30 days?
14.
14.
14 days. I, I would suggest that we take that up under items not reasonably anticipated, seeing how there's no line item on our...
Oh, there she is, right here. It's on the...
Yep.
Right here.
Assistant Treasurer Collector. Yes, we already voted to post that position.
So you'd like us to vote under?
Well, if you're going to, if you're going to vote to, if you're going to vote to give the 14 days notice, it, it should be up under, seeing as how there's no special line for that item here, we, we should bring that up under items not reasonably anticipated, if we're going to do the 14-day notice.
Well, may I ask if we can make a motion to move the items not anticipated up to now, discussion vote, just so that we can accomplish this? Do I need to make a motion for that? Or is it your discretion?
Does anybody, anybody have an objection to moving, moving that, moving that up to handle that now? Any objections to it? No. Okay, make a motion?
So I make a motion to end the consultant agreement with Sarah Hunter, Sarah Hunter, head of Mass Munifin, and to issue a letter of gratitude and appreciation for the work that she did for our town.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Bill?
Just that the, we're giving her 14-day notice, that's what we're doing. Yep.
Any other? None. All in favor of the motion? Four in favor, one absent. Next was Bagnall School Asbestos Abatement Plan. That was brought up at the last meeting. I think it was Dan was looking for it. I know Rebecca, you've been working on this, would have the information on it?
You have a big map.
We have a map here of it. Explaining about everything.
Wow.
Rebecca, you want to take that? I know you were working with the school and the maintenance staff.
Yes, we, we have been working with Bob Danforth and Greg Hayden over at the Penticott facilities, as well as Principal Day, to go over the capital plan that was put in place and some of the issues that had arose based upon the flooding that happened over in the Activity Room. Working with the former administrative coordinator, we were able to coordinate with our insurance company and get that situated. And in that process, it opened up a, a larger conversation as to what their capital need plan was, and the funding, and how they would proceed over the next couple fiscal years. It was found through that conversation that they were not, the, the funding that was usually put in place was not put in place at the former annual town meeting. So we went through the process of assembling a warrant article for the special town meeting to get those additional funds for them to proceed with the asbestos removal over at the school. If you remember, at the last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, there was some confusion as to exactly how many outstanding rooms needed to be addressed, and also what the cost was associated with those rooms, and making sure that it was transparent to the residents at town meeting exactly what they were voting on. Greg Hayden and Bob Danforth had put together the floor plan that you see before you this evening. It highlights the specific areas of concern, those being the ones that have the remaining asbestos. It also has a quote for the removal and remediation, as well as addresses some of the hallway maintenance and tiles that need to be relayed, and also shows you the actual date, an estimated date, that they would like to address these matters.
Any questions for Rebecca? None?
I know Selectman O'Neill has also been working on this specific project, and has been in communication with Principal Day as well. I think we weren't able to get a meeting together based upon schedules and whatnot, but I, I don't know if Selectman O'Neill has anything to add.
No, I did talk to Superintendent Dr. Butolomu on Tuesday about the same issues, and that I was hoping that we would all be on the same page at the end of the day. We recognize the building belongs to us, and to properly maintain it is in everyone's best interest as opposed to building a new building. So we're, we're committed to making sure the children are safe in that building, and doing what we have to do to mitigate all risk factors. I haven't heard back from the folks, I think you were on the email at the last meeting, so maybe they just circumvented me and went to you, which is fine, as long as we're all on the same page. We all understand it's the same rooms, it's the same this, so there's no discrepancy between what Principal Day says to what the administration says. That's where I was looking to reconcile any difference and why. But it looks like those differences have been reconciled. All the, the ones highlighted in red, I imagine, are the problem children, and anything in green has already been remedied. So we're not looking at a lot of work left over. Super.
Is there any chance that we could set up a tour of the building with Jim Day? And within, within maybe the next couple of weeks, if, if we can get the majority of the board to participate. I know Dan was looking at it. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I've spoken with Jim, Mr. Day, a few times, and he doesn't feel that he's the appropriate person to, to speak with on, on this particular subject matter. He feels we'd be more appropriate to speak with Mr. Danforth and Mr. Hayden, as they are the facility experts on this type of work. So Mr. Day is, asks that he kindly kind of be extricated from that, the whole process, and let the experts do their job. And, you know, he stays out of it and does the teaching and administrative, which is his bailiwick. I think that's, is that, do I have that right about, right about?
Yes, my understanding as well. And she could definitely try and schedule a tour with both Bobby Danforth and Greg Hayden, if that's what the board would like to see.
I'll, I'll work with you, we'll see if we can set something up within the next couple of weeks before the town meeting to, what's that, in two weeks?
I don't know if that schedule will work for them. I, I know that Greg is actually out on vacation. I don't know if he'll be returning before town meeting. I also know Mr. Danforth is out right now, but we can certainly try, and we can work out those details behind the scenes.
Okay. We'll see if we can come up with, we'll see if we can come up with some times that they're available, and get it out to the board, and see if the board is available. Go ahead, Kathy.
So just, mine's not color-coded, so just to, it looks like it's less than the $75,000 that we had initially thought, right? If I kind of ballparked it?
Um, no.
Where do you see? I see town copay $2,500.
The hallway abatement alone is, is $68,000.
That number is at the end of the year, I thought.
So that will take into consideration the money, so they'll start the process with the end of fiscal year '22, and then once the, the allocation is made for FY '23, they will finish up the remaining work to be completed with all of the asbestos and hallway remediation in FY '23.
So you intend to do the $67,000 in the same year? So you've got, $76,000, $90,000? About roughly up here? 90 grand? I'm just like roughing it out in my head, so.
18.
And then also not included is the maintenance plans for the J system, which is the heating control system, that was already a capital improvement project that they were planning on working with, with their budget this fiscal year.
Okay, but this adds up to around $90,000?
Yeah, I'm, I'm over 110 right now, and I haven't added the Activity Room, Hastings Flooring.
$18.
So that would be another, that's our copay.
Oh, yeah, you're over 100. You're right. And then the two, so a little over 100. You're talking about over 110, maybe?
I have 115, including the copay for the insurance for the flood damage in the Activity Room, roughly. I use round numbers.
Round numbers, yeah. So this room up here, room 29, there's no asbestos. We're just retiling it because it needs it? Or, I mean, this was, this whole thing was begun because of the asbestos. I'm just wondering if that's not asbestos. Was it never asbestos? Or is it new tile, or?
The tile's actually coming up.
Yeah, these might be tiles that are pulling up, and what they have to do, I've been in there recently, they put these big strips of like duct tape, so nobody trips over the, where the tile has come up, because it leaves a little, say, an indentation in the floor.
I guess what I'm asking is, this room looks like it's in the old section of the building, and I thought all of the rooms in the old section of the building, if they didn't have asbestos, it means we already took care of them. So is this a room that we've already taken care of, and now we're going back in and retiling it again? That's my question.
That looks like the new section of the building.
Well, the new section is over here by the cafeteria.
Well, the original, then up that main corridor up to 25 and 26, I, I thought that's where, where that original building ended.
The stage cafeteria, new gym is the new part of the building. Those are we added on.
That's the newest part, yeah.
Right. So over here, this little room, I'm guessing, did we already do the asbestos thing there? Because that's, I thought, my understanding was the whole building was full of asbestos, but maybe my understanding was wrong.
Not anymore.
Well, no, because we've dealt with it, right?
Correct. The majority of it.
So if this room is getting retilled and it doesn't have asbestos, I'm asking, when did we deal with it? I mean, how long did that tile last? I didn't, I just, I guess I didn't think we'd been working on this for that long. I'm just surprised that there's a room with no asbestos that we're retiling. That's all. It's, I'm not trying to be difficult.
We also have the Activity Room in that new section next to the small gym that...
That was the flood.
That was the flood. That's partially covered by insurance.
Yep, I saw that one. That one I understand. Okay, I've, maybe...
Some of it may be just standard maintenance, you know, which... Some of it may be just standard maintenance, you know, which everybody has to do, no matter what you.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't come near the cost of, you know, asbestos abatement.
So these arrows are to all of these hallways that need asbestos abatement? That's what we're talking about, all of these hallways?
No, it just looks like the two on, what would that be?
Well, the main hallway across the whole back.
East side of the building?
Well, there's this one across the back there, the upside C.
No, I've got all greens. Oh.
I'm looking at the arrow.
Oh, remaining at the end.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The hallway that comes down from that toward the music room. And of course, the hallway goes, that goes by the media center. These are a lot of hallways. That's why they want to do it when the school lets out early? Yeah, that makes sense.
To a point, but it can't disrupt the summer program either, so we've got to be mindful of that.
Well, they're, they're going to just abate the, see, I don't even know the difference between the abatement and the tiling, I'll be ignorant, but whatever it is they have to do, no one can be in the building when that gets done.
I wouldn't, I would imagine not.
By the end of June.
Or you'd have, I imagine you could do it, buildings, some buildings, they have, do this work while the building is open, they just cordon off that section of the building and with ventilation and sheets and things like that, so nothing escapes.
Right. So they could keep the, put the camp in the new section, it looks like, if they started camp before June 30th for any reason. Lot of hallways. Do we need to vote on this or is it going to be a warrant article, right?
Yeah.
They have to warrant in the, at the town meeting.
I believe it was just informational because it was requested the last meeting.
But the warrant article isn't for this amount of money.
It's in for 75.
So we'd need to increase that. You have to post it with the right amount of money, as close to as possible.
I think we're only going to do the 75 now and then at the, at regular annual, we're going to vote the difference, I believe is the way we're going to look at it, right?
And I also believe that they have $10,000 remaining in their account from the last fiscal year to cover some of that as well.
Okay, but just so they would not have access to whatever we voted the annual until July 1st, so as long as Penn Tucket's going to float the money for us? And that's, that's my question because otherwise you need it in this fiscal year. You need the whole amount.
So my understanding is that they're going to address the, all of the outstanding items except for that remaining hallway that they're hoping to do at the, at the fiscal year '23, but they're going to start what they can start prior to school being let out before they go and finish that particular area. Because there's different phases as part of the process, it's not just the abatement, there's the group that comes in and has to, you know, rip up the tile, then there's the abatement part, then there's the laying of the tile, like, so there are multiple people.
But this, the dates on this are in our fiscal year now, that's my point, and it says to be determined, to be determined. So they can only.
Kathy, that will be on the, this coming annual town warrant article to, for that, because that doesn't take effect until, it would have to be July 1st, because you can't, we can't vote on that at this annual town meeting.
Okay, but their dates to do the work are in June 2022. That's this fiscal year, that's what I'm trying to say. And they have to be determined, so there's other funds too. So that's a pretty big chunk of money that they would have to fund until we.
And that's not even the total amount because we have, we still haven't got the flooring company.
Right. And I do believe that that is a typo because I do believe that that is the project that they're hoping to start fiscal year '23, starting July 1. So I think that that's the portion that's removed from everything else on, on this plan and it's just a typo. And what, I just wrote a note to myself, is that I'm going to reach out to Greg Hayden and Bob Danforth when I try and coordinate that tour and ask them for an updated plan so that we can have that updated plan to be submitted with the materials distributed for the special town meeting as requested by the Board of Selectmen at their last meeting. And that date should be reflective of that.
Okay, so we're taking this 67,000 out of this fiscal year. If you take it out, then we're well below the 75,000, especially if they have 10,000 left over, so you wouldn't have to move that much money. That's kind of good. So do we need to vote on all the other amounts that are on here?
I don't think we need to vote on anything. That'll be done at the town, at the special town meeting. This is for informational purposes.
Right, but if you verify these amounts, we would not need to move 75,000 out of stabilization. It'd be quite a bit less. 10, 20, 37, 38, 40,000.
I believe the request is for $75,000 to be safe and making sure that we have enough and adequate funds to address the asbestos needs as they're laid out. Those are quotes by Hastings. Those are not final month numbers. Things do change when you get into a work environment, sometimes the price goes up, sometimes the price goes down, but it is, takes into consideration that contingency of you might not know what you have until you get in there kind of thing.
Okay.
Within reason, based upon what has been historically granted to the school.
Yes, I just don't want them to think we're giving them 75,000 every single year for nothing. But okay, that sounds like a good plan, thank you. So no vote needed.
Okay. Okay, we should be all set on that. Thank you for the explanation. Next, Board of Health, Board of Health Discussion Regarding Town Hall Mask Policy. The Board of Health, the Board of Health voted at the last meeting to, a meeting in actually September 9th, to require a mask mandate at the town hall and all town buildings. Motion was made due to the rising COVID cases in Groveland effective September 9th, masks required enter all town buildings until further notice from the Board of Health and the vote was unanimous. Any comments?
No, it does say specifically masks are required for all town employees and residents entering town hall, the Langley Adams Library, the fire station, and the police station and all other municipally owned buildings.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Yep, thank you. He anticipates me now. Just to weigh in on, you know, I don't think anybody enjoys having to wear a mask. It's not something we want to do, except maybe for Halloween and other fun stuff, but, you know, there's evidence that it is helpful and if it's helpful, then I feel that we should continue to do this until our medical experts tell us that we've reached a point where it's not necessary. We're doing it in the schools, the students are cooperative, we're doing it, we're learning, we're working through it, we're working to get on the other side of this pandemic and I think it's just going to take some hard work and wearing masks is part of that hard work. So whether or not you think it's keeping you safe or not safe, if people could just cooperate with these mandates as we have in a school building and in other public buildings, I think that working together will be a lot stronger than arguing with each other about it and that we're getting closer. I think I read in the paper that Massachusetts might be at a vaccination rate of 70%, which put us up in the top, I think the top 10 states in the country, I think, might be up there, which is something that's really good to hear and, and I'm looking forward to the day when, you know, we don't have to wear the mask, but for now, I work in a public school, I wear a mask every day, I'm more than willing to do that to help get us through this pandemic.
Any other comments? Bill?
No, I applaud them. When lives are at risk, if you're going to make a mistake, err on the side of caution. So I applaud them for doing just that.
Well, and my feelings on that is you, you look on a Sunday, these professional football games, you're getting 65,000, 75,000 people, no masks. Saturdays, college football stadiums, 60,000 to, some of them, 100,000, no masks, no It's time to end it and if you look at the infection rate of people coming down with COVID amongst the children in the schools, it's not very much. And it's, it's time to end it, it's time to get the kids back to normal, it's time to end all the, some of these schools' remote learning. It's, if people want to wear masks, let them, let them wear masks if they're, if they're, if they have a problem with it, if they, if they're afraid of it, let them wear masks. But it, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a policy and, you know, you have, you keep talking about people that, that don't want to get, get the vaccination. You have people that have immunity because they've had it before, people with religious exemptions, people with, people with, gee, was I losing my train of thought on it, but they don't want to get it. Religious exemptions, they have medical exemptions, they, their doctor, some of them has advised them not to get, not to get the shot, but they're required to get it. It's, it's, it's time that it's, it's over. So I, I, we're stuck with the Board of Health's recommendations, they are the governing body there. I have to disagree with it. Anybody else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So the facts speak differently than what you have just stated. So the people at home should know that the children in the school are getting sick. Most of the numbers in Groveland have been schoolchildren this year. That's the biggest group, next is the 20 to 29-year-olds. The students at college campuses are getting sick. St. Michael's College in Vermont had to go full remote for a couple of weeks. This pandemic is not easy. It's not anything we wanted, but it is still prevalent and is, is still making children and adults sick. And I listen to the medical community, they are advising that in public schools and public buildings, so that people that have to go into a public building can feel that there's some measure of safety. I think it's a small request during the pandemic. It's not a policy, this is something that's happening because of a pandemic. So it's not a forever thing and just, I feel like we just have to fight our way back to the country and the freedoms that we all enjoy and part of that fight is being willing to take on a level of discomfort of wearing a mask to go to work during the day. That's how I look at it. I would not impose this on anybody, but I think when you access public buildings like schools and, and town buildings where you might have to go to conduct business, where children have to go to become educated, you have to take into account that you want to have some, some levels of safety there that might be helpful. It's that simple. It's, it's not meant to take away freedom, it's meant to get us back to our freedom, which we all want.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, real quickly, I guess I have a maybe unique perspective. My mother was a depression-era baby. All my four uncles landed at Norman D. Beach, one after the other in waves. They made a tremendous amount of sacrifices. There were no nylons, there was no gas, there was no rubber for your, for your tires, you couldn't patch them. It was a four-year-long effort on some of my ancestors' parts to get through World War II in one piece. If getting a little jab and wearing this mask is all I have to do, is my big sacrifice to keep myself and my family safe, I feel that's the least I could do, considering the sacrifices that were made in generations before us. It seems like such a simple, simple request and if it saves just one life, it's all worth the effort. Because you can replace just about anything in life except a life. Once it's gone, you don't get it back. So if this is all I have to do, sign me up. Sign me up again and again and again.
Well, if you remember when it first started, give me 15 days of masks and we'll be out of this. We're shooting two years right now and we're still not out of it.
Also, 15 cases soon to be zero, but how did that work out for us?
Okay, anybody else? No, we don't need to vote on this, it's already a policy of the Board of, Board of Health. Selectmen's Timings Reports, Jason, you got anything?
No.
Bill, you got anything?
Yeah, real quick, I finally was able to attend a high school building committee meeting on Tuesday. Happy to announce that all the damaged areas that were affected by the fire in August have now been completely repaired to everyone's satisfaction, including the contractor and the folks giving us the warranty on the roof. We are approximately 63% through the project timeline-wise and we are 58% through the project construction-wise. We continue to be on budget. They are, we are facing some escalation costs, which some of the contractors are coming back as far as you know, there's tremendous supply chain issues and they are trying to pass on those costs to us. We are successfully fighting off those escalation costs that they're trying to charge because they signed the contract knowing COVID was around, so sorry they did what they did. Veterans, very, very sorry, I feel extremely remiss for not thanking all the veterans out there. Because of what you did, we get to do what we do, so thank you if you served in any capacity at all. Trash, did we ever get a representative from W, I mean, from Waste Management to come in or zoom in to us so that we could see how this has been going since the restructuring of the roots and everything else? Like to hear from them is how their side is going. I hear we, I know we hear from our side, not sure we heard from their side if there's any problems, what they have encountered or how this all restructuring is going. Snow plowing, if you've been paying attention to the news, very concerned, some of these communities are paying just stupid money to get snow plowers, including bonuses and crazy hourly rates. Are we going to have an issue or a problem with snow plowers this winter? Like to know that before the winter happens. Are we going to be short-staffed? Do we have to pay some of these crazy, crazy things I'm hearing on the, on the street that they, they have to pay plowers? And last but not least, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Hopefully it's a lot better than it was last year, you get to share it with your family and friends and God bless yous all and hopefully we're all around and have a nice Christmas too.
We'll get the information from Rennie as far as the snow plowing. I know Rebecca, you were supposed to be making contact with somebody from Waste Management. I don't know if you did or not.
So I did reach out to Roy, who you've been communicating with in the past, and he was unable to make tonight's meeting and then with the holidays, the schedule and with our special town meeting, things are a little tight for December, but he said that he would be better off trying to get something early January, if that's okay with the board. And then in regards to the plowing, I know that Rennie has been working diligently with that particular situation as it is become, it has become problematic with some of the drivers that we do or that we did have a contract for, they, they have left for higher-paying gigs and so he has increased what we have for the contracts. And so he has increased what we have for the contracts slightly, not astronomically compared to others and what you're seeing in the news, but just to give us a little bit more of a competitive edge, since we are already on the lower side. But he is working on that issue, and I can have him give you an update and send that out to the board tomorrow, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Kathy, did you have a question?
No, is it my turn yet?
Go ahead.
So I also... It was Bill knows, we tripped over each other, reaching out to Roy Boyer from Waste Management. And he did respond with respect to the one complaint, and he did note that the Waste Management truck was indeed on that street. It did have a GPS tracker. So it was... It did do a pickup on that street on the right day. And it appears that perhaps the resident didn't have the trash out in time, but I think they did send somebody back still to get the trash. I mean, they're pretty good about that. And I spoke to the Chairwoman of the Board of Health a little bit about it, Deb Hull, and she said that they would put a reminder out on the town crime. Maybe you could put one on the town website that just reminds residents... This, I'm not positive, is it 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM that you have to have it out by? I'm not positive. If you could verify that, just to remind them, a gentle reminder that you do have to have it out at an early hour, because they do start early. I don't think it's earlier than 6:00 AM, but... You're laughing at me. I don't... I'm not saying I know the time.
I don't know where I am on the route, but I know they do get to my house before 7:00.
Okay.
Yeah, likewise. I've been there chasing them down the street at, you know, 6:05.
Okay. So they do start early. So... But I think it's good to follow up with concerns and complaints, and I, you know, encourage people to let us know how their trash pickup is going. And I've heard some positive comments as well, that people feel that they're doing a really good job, and their trash has been picked up on a timely basis. I just had two things. One is, a full disclosure, my husband is on the cemetery commissioners, as well as we have our daughter buried in the cemetery. So strikes a little close to home. But I wanted to just bring to your attention that the Highway Department, I know, was trying to do a good thing and tried to put some pavement down. But because of the torrential rainfall, it got under that road. And not only did it kind of ruin it, but it washed across people's gravesites. So there's now rubble and dirt and rock covering gravesites. And I think that with the winter coming, I know the highway's going to be very busy. But if it were possible to find out some way they could stabilize this so it doesn't continue to wash onto the gravesites, because that's what's happening, and it's going to continue to happen unless they do something. Again, I know the intention was good, but the aftereffect is not. And other than that, I'm looking forward to a family Thanksgiving, and I hope everybody in Groveland has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Rebecca, you and Rennie went over there and looked at that?
Yes, we did go to the site, and we did... I talked with Rockdower over at the Cemetery Commission on Saturday, when he went out to the site to see exactly what was going on and how it impacted the site. He did block off the road on Saturday. And Rennie Carroll, the Highway Superintendent, and myself went out to the site to inspect exactly what happened. We did see that the road had undermined, and we did see that there was some washout there. Working with Rennie and the Highway Group, we are looking at a solution to help stabilize the area in the interim, specifically before the snowfall, and then looking at longer-term drainage solutions for the site as a whole. That cemetery is very old, and there's not really... They've never had roads. So when you get rainfall and you have brand-new concrete, you know, asphalt, the rain's got to go somewhere. And it really was one of those things where it just wasn't planned accordingly. I know the Cemetery Commission was very adamant about trying to get those roads paved based upon a newspaper article that came out. And then working with the Highway Superintendent, they kind of maybe pushed it a little bit, and we didn't plan accordingly. So we do recognize that, and we are trying to rectify the situation as best as we possibly can.
Yeah, I mean...
Can some of the stormwater money be used for that? That's all drainage over there.
We can take a look into that specifically. I'm not too sure, especially where we would be sending that stormwater or that runoff to. The site's a little bit challenging with the topography and the hills, and how we would actually do that without disturbing the area. And it's very sensitive to that effect. So it's not... It's definitely something worth pursuing and looking at whether or not there's any monies for that available.
Kathy, you had comment?
Just that years ago, Robert Guptill did an incredibly good study. I think Rebecca, it's somewhere in this Town Hall building. It was through the... Through Mike Dempsey's money, the CPA money. It's not really your money, but you oversee. But I thought in that study that they looked at the roads as far as like what was salvageable and what was not, because they really are like cow paths, and it's a tough situation. And you're right, when you disturb one piece, you just don't foresee what's going to happen down the hill further. And then all of a sudden, we got that incredibly torrential rainfall and just erect havoc on it, unfortunately. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I only have one thing. Late last week, former Town Clerk Dick Abbott passed away. He was 90 years old, worked for the town of Groveland for 25 years as a tax collector and Town Clerk. And him and his wife passed away within about a week of 10 days of each other, services on Saturday. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Sorry to hear that.
So little thing about Dick Abbott. He held two positions. He was our Town Clerk and our tax collector. And at that time, we had an elected treasurer. We had elected clerk, elected treasurer, and then I believe he was appointed tax collector. So he was a one-man show in there, doing it all. He was quite a character. Really enjoyed spending the time that I got to know him. So wish him well in the... Where he is now.
Okay. Moving on. All the unfinished business, Board of Selectmen's policies and procedures. I'd like to recommend that we table this until we give a full board. I know Dan had some comments that he wanted to make, and he's not here tonight.
Okay. Make a motion to table.
Motion to table is our second.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to table. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Thank you. Correspondence? I didn't see any.
Sorry, something did come in late. There was... I put it in the... Your file folder is out in the hallway. The Board of Health has appointed a new public health nurse. So I put that as correspondence. As you know, they have the ability to make those appointments, but I wanted to let you all know, because she is starting effectively. Sorry, she is starting immediately. So I wanted you all to be aware of that.
Well, thank you. I thought that was under the mask. Because you included the minutes of the meeting.
My apologies.
I thought it... No apology necessary. We... Nothing else? We motion to... Oh, no, we need to go into... Back into executive session to finish up on one item. Kathy, you want to read the, again, executive session for non-union... For union contract?
Union. I just have to find the... I'll make a motion to go into Executive Section under Chapter... Oh, thank you.
Pursuant to Mass General Law, Section 38.
Section 21A, Subsection 3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation to conduct collective bargaining sessions for water and sewer union contract and highway union contract. Votes may be taken. And this is at 8:45 PM.
And we will not be returning to a regular session. Roll call vote for going to executive session. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Jason. Thanks, Mike.